Sorry.
So this is the September eighteenth, Planning Commission meeting. We'll, starting now, let's start with roll call.
Um, Commissioner, I'm sorry, Chair Golden.
Here.
Vice Chair Tark. Commissioner Brother. Commissioner Krasinski.
Here.
Excellent.
And Commissioner Krupstil is absent.
Correct. Okay, let's start with the usual. We have oral communications on anything that is not on the agenda. Is there anybody in the schoolhouse? I see no hands. Online. I see one hand on three zero five six. Would you allow them to speak, please?
Hi, it's Dana. I'm curious when you guys are going to get back to reorganizing your committee. Um, you're, because that was the night that your meeting was canceled because of IT problems. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have any other oral communications? Um, let me just answer that, Dana. We're trying to get it scheduled as soon as possible. Uh, is, is the plan. Yep.
At your next meeting, sir.
At the next meeting. Perfect. And I think that closes oral communications. So let's get back to the, the first and only specific item on the agenda, an architectural review. Do we have a staff presentation? Oh, the order, by the way, just so you know, staff presentation will allow the applicant to, to speak. Uh, we'll have questions from the committee. We'll allow oral communication from the public and then we'll come back and debate with the committee and make a decision. Okay, staff presentation, please. There we go.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, can you hear me okay in the schoolhouse?
Yes.
Great, thanks. My name is Jake Garcia. I'm a consultant planner for the town. Uh, the item before you tonight is a request, and actually, I'm not sharing my screen. One second. Right. Can you see, uh, the presentation up here?
Yes, we can.
All right, starting from the top. Um, my name is Jake Garcia. I'm a consultant planner for the town. And the item before you tonight is a request for design review approval for proposed landscape improvements. That include a pool, gazebo, patio, landscape planting, and significant tree removal, uh, site development permit, and trail work completed without the benefit of a permit at one two seven Pinon Drive in Portola Valley. And, uh, before getting into the details of the project, I would like to first take some time to walk you through the background of the project. In November of two thousand twenty-two, the applicant, uh, contacted the town with initial plans for landscape enhancements, which encompassed the portion of the project that is the new pool, pool pavilion, outdoor dining area landscaping. The applicant was advised that the project site has an active code enforcement case from October two thousand twenty-one, which pertains to unauthorized site work that was carried out on the project site. Accordingly, the proposed project includes a request to legalize previously unauthorized work. In August of two thousand twenty-three, the applicant requested a conceptual design review by the ASSE to establish a clear understanding of what they can expect, uh, from the ASC as they work on their formal application for design review, site development permit of the proposed project, and legalization of the site work conducted without the benefit of the necessary permits. So in August of two thousand twenty-three, when the ASC reviewed the conceptual application for the project and provided feedback and direction to the applicant, their feedback was to prepare a revised landscape plan to accommodate restoration of the landscape surrounding the trail work and vegetation clearance, and to implement recommendations from the Conservation Committee. The ASC also advised the trail should be revised so the trails do not encroach into the required setbacks. Finally, the ASC appointed an ASC Commissioner, uh, Breen to an ad hoc subcommittee to continue the work with the applicant team and Conservation Committee to provide feedback on the project revisions and to ensure that the revisions were in line with the direction that were provided by the ASC at the time of conceptual design review. The applicant, the applicant team has since worked with Commissioner Brain and Conservation Committee to implement the suggested revisions and submitted a formal application to the town for review and consideration of approval. On August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four, last month, the ASC reviewed the project and found the changes to the plans to reflect the feedback that they had previously provided. The ASC unanimously recommended that the planning commission approve the project with the conditions of approval included as attachment one of the staff report. The planning commission is reviewing this project because the total amount of grading exceeds one thousand cubic yards. And site development permits, which, uh, include grading over a thousand cubic yards are subject to, uh, approval by the planning commission. And I'll go into more detail of the site development permit later in this presentation. So I'll now continue on to the presentation of the project. Uh, one twenty-seven Pennon consists of two parcels that are located west of Pennon Drive. The first parcel butts Pennon Drive via, uh, Flaglot driveway. This parcel is undeveloped except for the, uh, driveway, which connects Pennon Drive to the second parcel. The second parcel is where the existing residence and site improvements are located. Both parcels are located within the residential estate zoning district. These parcels are surrounded by parcels in the same zoning district to the north, west, and south, and Stanford University's Jasper Ridge Biological Reserve to the east. The parcels have an, uh, average slope of thirty-four point seven percent. And the proposed pool, gazebo, and site improvements are located on the second parcel behind the existing main residence. The site work done without the benefit of a permit is located up slope of the existing residence and spans along both parcels. Here's the existing site plan showing the location of the driveway on the front parcel connecting to the existing main residence on the second parcel. The project includes two components. The first is the proposed site improvements at the rear of the house, the pool, gazebo, patio, landscape plantings, and significant tree removal, and site development permit. And second, a request to permit the trail work already completed without the benefit of the permit. The total amount of grading between the two projects components, uh, is greater than a thousand cubic yards and therefore requires final approval by the planning commission. And starting first with the proposed site improvements, uh, the applicant proposed to construct a new pool, gazebo, and outdoor dining area at the rear of the residence on the adjacent hillside. The proposed pool is an affinity pool with a spillover edge anticipated to be a total size of fifty feet by seventeen feet. The surrounding pool patio is to be stone paving matching other paved areas on site. Minor paths will be constructed above and below the main pool patio. The path below the pool patio will extend out to an existing clearing, uh, setting area and the path, uh, I'm sorry, the path above the pool patio will extend out to an existing clearing, seating area, and the path below will connect the pool to the main residence. Proposed improvements are supported by retaining walls. The proposed gazebo is octagonal in shape and provides for a covered dining area, including an outdoor kitchen and a small storage area. Previous plans included a fireplace within the gazebo, and that has since been removed from the project. Here are the elevations of the proposed gazebo from the north, east, west, and south. Here are the proposed materials. For the gazebo, this includes an Aztec timber tech siding and a weathered teak finish and a slate roof. The patio will have stone veneer, uh, and bronze color railing to match the existing patio colors and materials. Here are the renderings associated with proposed improvements to help better visualize the proposed project into the landscape. Uh, this slide shows the proposed landscaping at the patio area. The proposed project consists of two thousand four hundred and fifty-nine square feet of new landscaping. The project proposes to utilize a sixty-seven point thirty-four percent of the maximum allowed water allowance. And further, the existing impervious surface on site is twelve thousand eight hundred and fifty square feet. The proposed project would increase the total impervious surface to sixteen thousand three hundred and fifty-one square feet, where twenty-three thousand two hundred is the maximum allowed. There are two significant trees and one non-significant tree proposed for removal due to their location in the proposed patio area. All three trees are costlevos. Here's the exterior lighting plan. In green is the existing lighting. Red signify signifies proposed wall lights. Blue signifies the downlights in the gazebo, and yellow signifies the lighting in the pool in lower pool trough. Moving on to the second component of this project, the request for permit for trail work already completed with, excuse me, homeowners have completed site work without the benefit of a permit and will need to obtain permits for the work completed prior to the approval of any further work being permitted on site. The unpermitted work includes trail cuts throughout two parcels, up slope of the residence and driveway. The project engineer has mapped the location of the trail work already completed, shown here on your screen. As outlined at the beginning of this presentation, the applicant team has worked with the commission, with Commissioner Breen and the Conservation Committee to incorporate changes required by the ASCs so that the trails no longer encroach into the setbacks. On your screen in dark brown areas, the trails that were previously in the required setbacks and will be abandoned in place and mulched over, uh, are, or I'm sorry, are trails that will be abandoned in place and mulched over. The trail will be modified to add steps where there were previously switchbacks. Additionally, the applicant has included new plantings along the trail work to better screen for neighboring properties. It has been identified that there is a high number of invasive plant species and that the applicant should proactively work to identify a plan for removal. The applicant has provided a five-year re-debatment plan for the project site. The town's Conservation Committee has reviewed the project and provided a set of comments to the applicant that provide extensive feedback and recommendations. The Conservation Committee's comments include recommendations to review plans for any changes made to the landscape plantings and that the planting list, uh, be updated to include planting information for plantings proposed along the trail work. Upon recommendation of approval, the ASC, uh, communicated that while the plan to revise the trails to be removed from the setbacks is sufficient and lessens the impacts to neighboring, uh, to neighboring properties and comments that were identified in the conceptual design review for this project. They also noted that there are a few places where the trails located in the setback do not have, uh, as much of an impact to the neighboring properties as they are located where they are either not visible or would not have, uh, an adjacent neighbor, residential neighbor, um, to impact. And so I went ahead and I identified the areas of those, um, portions of the, the trails that were identified. So in, in red, um, the ASC communicated that they would support revisions to keep these areas of the trails as they exist and should, and should the applicant decide to want to keep them. Uh, the application before each night does not propose to, uh, to keep the areas within the set pack. Um, but this has been brought to your attention as it has been communicated by the ASC. And further, the ASC has added a condition of approval to the recommendation to have the applicant, uh, that, uh, to revise their landscape plans to include additional landscape screening of the primary south-facing switchback portion of the trail. Um, and this is above the, uh, existing propane tank, uh, there. It's located in the blue circle. So additional screening would be required to be located there. Uh, the final landscape plans as a condition would require review by one member of the ASC and Conservation Committee prior to the building permit issuance. This, uh, slide shows a breakdown of the proposed grading. Um, this is the grading done without the benefit of a permit and the proposed grading. Um, the combined total is a total of one thousand one hundred and ninety cubic yards. And again, is the reason why, uh, the planning commission is reviewing the item tonight. Notice that the application was mailed to all property owners within three hundred feet of, uh, the project site on September fifth in advance of this meeting. The applicant has also conducted their own public outreach throughout this process, and since the publication of the staff report, uh, no comments have been received. Staff recommends that the planning commission review the plans and staff report, consider public comments, offer feedback, and to approve the proposed project subject to the draft conditions of approval. This is the end of the staff presentation. Both, uh, staff and the applicant team are available for any questions, uh, from the planning commission. The applicant team, um, would like to introduce themselves. We have Sue Epstein, who is, I believe, a participant in the meeting that will need to be promoted uh, to a speaker in order to introduce herself. Um, but with that, I, I yield back to you, Chair. Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Um, so would the applicant team like, I mean, I hear Sue likes to make some comments. Would the applicant team also like to come up? I know, I know, but any of you, because if you do, then we'll come up and have you sit, and so you can be on the mic, too. We're just no presentation. Okay, all right. That spring, is Sue there somewhere, Ben?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful.
Is there anything you'd like to say to us?
Uh, yeah, I'd kind of just like to introduce myself and just, uh, tell you a little bit about what's been going on. Um, I, my name is Sue Epstein and I live at one twenty-seven Pinyon. Um, I'm sorry I can't be there in person, but we're in the East Coast for a family event that I just couldn't miss. Um, I wanted, by way of introduction, I just wanted to let you know that my husband Jeff and I have lived in Northern California and in Portola Valley on and off for the last fifty years. We both attended Stanford in the seventies and Jeff teaches there now. Um, he lived in Portola Valley when he was in business school, um, on Palmer Lane, actually, and it was always his dream to return here, which we did in two thousand eight. Um, before we bought, uh, Pinion, we rented and then bought two thirty-seven Apache, which was a little too much work for us, and, um, Jeff had a few health issues, so we moved down to Atherton for a few years, but the traffic was a little too much for us, so we continued looking for properties up in Portola Valley. And we found this architectural gem that was built by, uh, Lou Platt, the former CEO of Hewlett Packard. It's a very unusual house. Um, as you probably know from having come up to, um, see it, and evidently it took a long time to build and they spent a lot of time in the planning commission themselves. Um, uh, we moved to Portola Valley for the tranquility and natural beauty of the town, and we really want to preserve and protect and enjoy our dramatic eighteen-acre property. We thought that walking trails would allow us access to the upper reaches of our land, and so we hired a reputable company to install them in two thousand twenty-one. However, we were not informed by them that we needed to have a permit for this work, which took place over two days with a bobcat. I, I think they're very well designed and I, we've gotten good feedback from the ASCC, um, on, on that, um, and that they're safe. Um, we really regret that we were not aware of the requirement to, to seek a permit. Um, this was sort of the beginning of our saga. And in, and if we had it to do over, we would definitely applied for one and discussed our project with our neighbors. So here we are, three years later, after working intensively with town planners, the ASCC, and professional engineers, landscape designers, architects, attempting to gain approval of our trails as well as the swimming pool, both of which would afford us and our children and grandchildren a great deal of pleasure and add to the beauty of our property. Um, we've learned a lot about our terrain at the time, uh, during this time. Um, Nona and Dana particularly have been amazing in teaching us about erosion and the plantings that are best on the chaparral, et cetera. And we also had a six-month intensive experience with controlled burning on our, on our border with Jasper Ridge. Um, I worked with the head of Jasper Ridge and the Woodside Fire Protection Committee to inform others of this project and eventually invited the burn boss and crew to access the burn site through our property. We thought it was appropriate to be a good neighbor and it paid off with good relationships and successful safe burning. My first foray into civic activism. Um, I just want to say that I'm really grateful to the ASCC and now the planning commission that you took the time to visit our property, to walk the trails, discuss the issues of chaparral maintenance with us, and evaluate our pool site. We have really great confidence in our team, which includes architect Eileen Gordon, who worked with the Platts, our contractor Dave McLaughlin of, of Guild, who helped build the house, driveway and bridge, and Jenna Bayer, a top landscape designer who worked on the development of the Portola Valley Trail System. We believe that our projects are in keeping with the Lanes and Platts view of this complicated piece of land. And I would, I assure you that we will continue to treat it with respect in this development, especially in regarding to planting and, and lighting. This has been a long road for us, and we hope you will believe us when we say that we want to be good stewards of the land and have absolutely no wish to disturb our neighbors. We just want to be good Portola Valley citizens. And, uh, thank you for giving me the opportunity to say that.
Thank you, Sue. So, um, do any of the commissioners have questions for the staff or applicant? Go for it.
Um, what, when do trails require a permit? Is it based on how much dirt will be moved or? When do they require?
There, there are a couple of factors if, uh, that may, uh, require a permit for our trails, and that one includes the site development permit. Um, at fifty cubic yards, a soil movement, uh, site development permit is required. And, uh, that can be reviewed at a staff level. At a hundred cubic yards, it's reviewed by the ASC. And at a thousand cubic yards, it's reviewed at, uh, the planning commission level. Um, should there be a trail or path that does not require a site development permit, um, to the discretion of the planning building director, depending on the potential impacts it may have to neighboring sites, it could be bumped up to an ASC for review, uh, just given its proximity to maybe neighboring sites or existing trails, networks, um, or anything that may kind of trigger the need to review it with respect to the town's design guidelines.
Thanks. Um, and then there's been, there's been a lot of discussion from the previous ASC meetings and in the packet about the, about setbacks and kind of reorienting the trails to observe setbacks. Is that, is that an actual thing that, I mean, I understand that maybe there are some compromises with neighbors and stuff like that, but do, are trails legally required to observe setbacks? I thought they were for buildings.
There are no, uh, development standards that require a trail to meet a building setback. Um, those are typically reserved for structures or buildings. Um, and or, you know, there are specific setbacks or fences when located within, um, the, I guess, the standard building and step setbacks. Um, so that was kind of used as a, uh, a tool by the ASC to, to provide feedback given the, the comments that were received by the neighbors.
And I guess, given that, do you think anything here creates a risk of either precedent or expectation going forward for trails respecting setbacks or would we want to do anything to make it clear that that is is not a requirement that's being enforced?
Uh, in scenarios like this, it's typical for, um, a discretionary review of trails that may be impacting neighboring sites. Uh, and so i- it's common for the ASC in planning or, and/or the planning commission to deliberate on, um, conditions related to the implementation of, of, of trails on site. Um, and so oftentimes you will see that there may be conditions associated with mitigating potential impacts through landscape screening or through relocation, or maybe it's lighting, if there's lighting proposed. Um, so I don't think that this would set a precedent. It's more so, uh, yeah, another deliberation that the ASC and planning commission have the discretion to make a decision on.
Okay. Um, and then there's this aspect that you discussed, um, that the ASCC recommended that they be inclined to allow some of the existing trail switchbacks, which were previously, um, marked to be pulled in. And so if we decide that we want to actualize that, what, how, how do we do that? Uh, what would you recommend?
Um, one potential approach, um, would be to condition the project, um, to allow for the applicant to, uh, decide prior to building permit issuance, whether or not they would like to keep those portions of the trail. And should they decide to keep those portions of the trail, um, we'd recommend leaving it up to the ASC or, uh, Conservation Committee to review the final plans, uh, showing where the trails would be left in place and, uh, that would be left to their satisfaction for approval. But through a condition of approval ultimately.
Let's limit it to questions.
Jake, uh, I, I, I'm looking at the timeline on this. I know this was at the ASCC a year ago, and then here it is a year later. I don't know what caused those delays, but as I understood your answer just now, if we are to leave the, if we are to allow the applicant to make the decision to leave those trails where they are, are you saying we'd have to go back to the ASCC?
But yeah, correct. Uh, not the full ASC, it would be one member of the ASC would review it. So at the time of building permit review, we first, um, confirmed that it complies with the municipal code and and the approved project complies with what was entitled by the planning commission. Um, and then those elements that have been, um, identified to be reviewed by a member of the ASC, we would, we would work with them one-on-one to just get, uh, an approval there.
And, and that's already happening for other elements, right?
Yeah.
That's already happening.
Thank you.
And then one more question on, it's on page thirteen on the, the conditions, condition number five. Um, it references, it just, it basically says that, um, references adding, uh, screening for the quote, primary south-facing switchback portion of the trail. And it wasn't clear to me reading it what that meant or, you know, what the, the primary south-facing switchback portion was, but I, I mean, I understand that I think it's very clear to everyone that's involved working on it. So I guess would you recommend just leaving it or adding something to clarify which portion that's talking about just? Um, you know, so that is clear as, as written?
Uh, good question. Uh, and it's to your discretion if you'd like to revise the language to make it more clear. However, the element of having an ASC member review it prior to final approval, um, and having the meeting, uh, recorded kind of uses the advantage of being able to, uh, reflect back to the record or, you know, if, depending on when this application moves through, um, the ASC member may be familiar with the project and be able to provide that feedback, um, and approval of whatever screening is proposed for that portion of the trail. Um, so, you know, that final review will help out, but you may wish to clarify the language if you find it necessary. So like a recommendation to amend the, or I'm sorry, a motion to amend that, uh, that condition.
That's all my questions. Thanks. Do we have other questions from the commission?
Uh, yeah, a couple of questions. Uh, one is, I may have missed it, but, uh, are we? I'm looking for the ASC. Uh, uh, minutes. Are they, were they included in the package here?
No.
No, why, why not?
Just the, the, the staff report and the recording is, I don't believe there are meeting minutes for the ASC during this time. Um, I believe the town deferred to recordings.
Um, okay. Uh, we were just talking about precedent and, uh, I have a question about, uh, penalties for violations of grading without a permit. So we were So we were referring to that as. Work, guarding work, site work without the benefit of the permit. But it's actually, it's. It's a violation of the municipal code which calls for penalties. Have penalties been assessed? According to the penalty resolution and additional fees pursuant to.
I am not sure. I would need to uh, connect with code enforcement to see what actions have been taken. I, I do not know.
Maybe the applicant can speak to that?
Is uh, Sue, are you still online or do any of the?
Hi, hi, yes, I'm, I'm here. Uh. No, we haven't um. Heard about any penalties about it. Jake has been our main point of contact with uh, with the town. So um. You know, I, they have not been punished yet in that, in that way.
I'm sorry, you'd have to come up. So we've got it all on record.
Are you part of the applicant team? You need to hit the button. Where is she? Hit the button.
Hi.
Yes.
I'm Eileen Gordon, the architect on the project, and I'm not specifically familiar with um, any repercussions. Other than there was sort of a, I guess, sort of a stop work on the project. Immediately everything had to be halted. Things were halted. And then when we applied for permits for the cooling dishevel. We were told that we could not proceed until we resolved the trail situation. So there have been repercussions um, to that extent.
Thank you. Nicholas, any follow-up on that?
Yeah.
We can come back to it in discussion.
Were there any repercussions with respect to uh, the entity that did the. Uh, grading work?
There, yeah, go ahead, please come up. So it's official.
Hi, I'm Jenna Bayer.
A little closer to the mic, please.
We never know. Um, represent the landscape director from Bitts Canyon, the project from Huron. At the last October. Um. Code enforcement did not provide any penalties and bill. The option, we have worked with Jake and responded to everything. So, and as you mentioned, we haven't seen anything regarding that. I do know that this contractor, I tried to reach out to him to get data on. How much soil we move and things like that. And he would not respond, did not get back to us. He was paid um, by the homeowner. Um, I tried to track him down, nothing's happened. I, we're left with not much information. I'm sure if there was some type of um, resolution that needs to happen, it can be arranged. I would think that in order to move forward, we need to get an approved plan and permit to move forward. To make things right. And there would be permit fees and possibly. Some type of fees. You know, in the regard to the stop work order, but I don't know. Usually. I have only had one other stop work order with another contractor in my entire career. Um, the um, contractor then contacted the municipality, asked them what the fee, it was basically. A fee. Um, he paid it, the contractor paid it because of the system state. He had a stop work order, things had to be fixed, up the back. There was a permit on the job, he just had an infraction. So that's my experience. I would have thought that there would have been something.
Thank you.
Do we have uh? Letters of support by uh, the adjacent residents? In the, in the packet? Can you please direct me to the letters of support by the adjacent?
Uh, so there are, the, the outreach that was done by the applicant um, is in the packet. And it's included as attachment. Uh, one moment. Attachment fifteen, which is on red page. Uh, it is the last page of the, the packet, one thirty-eight. And um, there were two comments that were provided on previous. Um, considerations of this project, but nothing that was submitted on behalf of this planning commission meeting tonight. Uh, the first one, uh, both uh, comments were from uh, the owner of the neighboring up, uh. Upslope property, um. Who, at the time of conceptual design review, had uh, voiced concerns with the project's uh, visibility. And potential impacts from the uh, entertainment areas, as they called it. Um, on it within their plan check letter, and then they provided photos of the trail work from their property. Um, and then at the time of the A S C C review, after the revisions were made to the packet, they indicated that. Because the trails were being removed from the setbacks and screened along the properties at one forty-five and one fifty Lissandra. That they uh, no longer have any comments. So um, we kind of watched the progression of their comments being there and then being. Uh, mitigated for at the time of formal recommendation to the planning commission, um, but they are not included in the packet.
So I'm. Looking at the letter on one thirty-eight by uh, Nick Gordon. And it looks like there was one neighbor, Mark Holmes. Uh. Who raised objections to the. Trails as they were before. He expressed concerns, the A S C C. Blah, blah, blah. Requests from Holmes including decontamination trails. Development files from the, and request from Holmes. Signed with, and we don't know what Mr. Holmes, that's the one. We do? That, that's the one that Jake pissed. That, so that was, that was one and he. And then Waske has uh, not provided any comments at this time. Is that right?
I, I always think I tracked that. Correctly. Um, Mark Holmes is the commentator, the initial in primary commenter um, at the time of conceptual design review. And at the time of formal review uh, last month, um, where the first meeting, he raises concerns and the second meeting. He rescinded them based off of the revisions that were made to plans and uh. In summary.
Alright, so I, he uh, withdrew his earlier complaints. We don't have a record of that because we don't have minutes at the meeting.
Uh, that is correct. They were read into the record at the um. The, the comments that were recent, being rescinded, were read into the record uh, at last month's meeting, but there are no meeting minutes available for that meeting.
Sue raised her hand, I don't know.
Oh, I didn't see that. Oh, hey Sue, can uh, can we put Sue on?
Oh, hi again. Um, yeah, I. I, I did not realize that I needed to get uh, written statements from my neighbors supporting the pool. I have had. A number of my neighbors, um, particularly Jason Donahue, Donahue and uh, neighbors across. The ridge uh, who live on um. Paloma Romoso, I guess it is, that can see us. I've had them all over and they've seen the pool site. And didn't have any objections to it. Um, Mark himself. Uh, said he had no objections to the pool as long as we, you know, took care of things in his view, um, uh, which is. Across the draw in the middle of the back. That was always the part that annoyed, annoyed him. Um, so anyway, I mean, I, I'm sure I could go and, you know, get written commentary from them, uh. But I, you know, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't have that prepared, but, but I have notified. You know, most of my neighbors about the, the pool project and invited them over to, to see the land.
Thank you, Sue.
That is in our notes. I just don't have the exact uh, page where. The nerds confirmed that she had the meeting.
Linda, do you have any questions?
Um, my only questions really were the issues that Ronnie brought up about the setbacks on the trail. Um, the only thing that bothers me at all about this is who this contractor was. I, having been out there now twice and seeing the trails. Um. Ended by them, they're better than some trails where I live at Portola Valley Ranch, so, uh, but I, but I. But I'm more frustrated that he held himself out as knowing how to build trails and at the same time not, not advising. Epstein's to uh, reach out to the town. I don't know if we have any authority or any ability to.
So, so is there, is there? Is that your question? Do we have a? Eric, do you know or?
I can, I can research that and get back to the commission at the next meeting.
Is that necessary? Is it, is it necessary for you to make a decision?
It's not necessary for me to make a decision today.
But we'd like to know.
But I'd like to know in the long haul, I, I, that we don't want to know that this is going to happen to other citizens and other similar situations.
That's how I understood your question.
Yeah. That'll be fine. I don't need that.
Get a report.
Thanks. Uh, that's the only question I had.
Okay, uh, let's see, from, there's, oh, I'm going to move to a public comment. Uh, and is there anybody who would like to make a public comment, either in the schoolhouse or online? I see one there. Our conservation committee, please come up.
Come to the phone microphone.
Turn it on, please.
Uh, my name is Nona Charriello and I'm a member of the Conservation Committee. And I served on the Ad Hoc Committee for Conservation uh, with Danabreen and Mary Ann Thunder. Today was my fifth site visit to one twenty-seven Pinion and uh. I thought it might be useful, and I could be wrong on this, to just sort of recap. How Conservation reviewed the, the plan, the trails that were put in without benefit of a permit. And sort of how we see this going forward. I, I can do that in a few minutes if that would be helpful.
Can I request that uh, we treat Nona's comments as supplemental? More in the form of a witness rather than as public comment, given her role. Maybe and given her enough time to speak.
I think that makes perfect sense. So yes, the short answer is yes. But we have a lawyer who wants to make it clear.
Well, I've, I've actually asked um, Jake to share some slides and these are my first report on this property. Was more than a year ago, so I want to just walk you through a few slides from that presentation. Partly to explain how Conservation thought about this project, but also how it influenced our thinking over time about trail work in town. Uh, so the first image that you see here is an overlay of geology on a hill shade topo. And one twenty-seven Pinion is the parcel that is outlined in white. The green area on that map is uh, greenstone, so this is a geology layer in this map. And the, the point of this map is to illustrate that. All of the trail work and most of the property is on greenstone, which is a less erodible soil than many of the soils in town. Um, but you can also see that it's a very steep property with southwest facing slopes. And four major canyons and sort of a bowl shaped area as well. The blue area by contrast is a different soil type. It's a whiskey hill formation. And that little pink area that you see at the bottom, D L S, is a dormant landslide. And so what this slide illustrates is in part. That greenstone is not as erodible as some of the other substrates in town, and that's part of the reason why. The trails look as good as they do now, even though the slopes have been pretty barren now for a couple of years. We're seeing the kind of clearing that was done on this property all over Portola Valley now. People are concerned about fire risk. They're clearing the understory. And from a conservation perspective, that's really a concern for wildlife. If there's no. Forage, if there's no shelter, if there's no habitat for wildlife, we won't have wildlife here. And so. One of the things that Conservation has been doing very um, assertedly. Is thinking about how to merge fire risk reduction and understory removal with um. Fire protection basically and retaining habitat. So if I could have the, the next slide. What Conservation has done is come up with a multi-page guideline. On, on how we think this can work, how to create habitats, especially on steep slopes. I, I think Jake said that the slope, average slope on this property is over thirty percent, so it's a very steep property. How to create habitats that have native vegetation that supports wildlife, but in a sort of patch-like arrangement. So that there is spacing between shrubs and that will um. With shrubs holding the soil in place to reduce erosion, reduce invasion by exotics and thereby. Reduce fire risk by highly flammable invasives. You can see that um, I don't think I have a pointer here, but you can see between the two main clumps, there's sort of a diagonal sweeping line there. That's actually a path and that's the kind of break between these shrub patches that we think will help solve all of these problems together. This diagram and the handout that we've prepared and the guidelines on the right, which show how to modify it in the context of steeper slopes. Is how we see one twenty-seven Pinion now. We see that, that, that property as. More or less coming into shape and conforming to this diagram. Um. I, I want to say that it's been really great working with the Epstein, working with Jenna and Brooke and their team. Who have been very cooperative in thinking about how to, how to come up with a plan that looks like this and especially. How to reduce things like invasives, which will only increase the fire risk over time rather than lessen it. So. Conservation is on board the plan as it is now. But we also think. More could be done, and so we look forward to working with them and with the owners though. Um, as the property develops. I'd like to just show a couple more slides about how we think about. How, how you actually do this on a landscape. And if I could have the next slide. We start out by asking what naturally occurs in a place like this. And so this is actually. The same view as you saw on the first slide. Um, with the one twenty-seven parcels outlined in white. But the background here is a nineteen thirty air photo. Um, with an overlay showing the driveways and the structures that are there now. What you can see is you can see those steep canyons. You can see that they were covered by chaparral primarily with oaks in some of the canyons. And you can see that that's the same vegetation that was on Jasper Ridge. Some of that chaparral is still there, and that's what you saw today in the site, that there's still chenise there that's coming back. There is some California sage that's coming back. Um, definitely doesn't look quite like this. Next slide. Actually, um, well, okay, this is good. So this is what the parcel, the property looked like last year in an air photo. And you can see the trails. And you can see that the chaparral is essentially all gone from this property, except for, you know, some isolated plants that are starting to come back. The um, the trails don't show up incredibly well on this, but you can basically see that. All of those canyons still have the oaks in them. And one thing that's noticeable is that the one canyon that did not have oaks in it. Actually has an oak in it now, didn't have it in the nineteen thirties. And you can see that that drainage is really green. What we would like to encourage that, and that's the drainage where the trail has to be moved, that's the drainage that goes down to the propane tank. That is a place where oaks can establish naturally and form oak stand. That is a place where oaks can establish naturally and form oak stands such as you see in the other drainages. And we would look forward to working with their team to make that happen.
That's great.
Once those plants are in place, that's the scaffolding of the vegetation and the understory can be brought back.
Terrific. Thank you.
The last point I want to make.
Okay. All right. Last point.
One last point. And that is that there's been a lot of discussion about switchbacks. And so I do want to just sort of, um, close with that. It wasn't the conservation committee that recommended steps or the setback. We actually don't know that much about trail construction in town and what the rules are. But the trails that are in place now are good. They could be great. And the problem that I see with them, and we probably all saw this today, is that there is some sloughing where gophers are digging into the banks and you saw the snake that was in one of the holes, but you also saw the piles of loose soil along there. If I could have the next slide. Some of you know that I went back after the first, to the first switchback, and that's what's shown on the right in this, in this diagram, this image. That reminded me of a classic textbook image of a switchback, which is shown at left in the California Park, State Parks Trails Handbook, which is a really great guide to making trails. And what it illustrates is that there are ways to make sure that trails stay in place. And even when you want to have a really light touch on the landscape, which I know this team does and we really support, the, the trails could use a little bit more love. That's the best way to say it. So, um, I'll, I'll leave it at.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Ask one question?
Oh, sure.
Just want to make sure that you're not, um, I mean, so on, on the switchbacks, there's the, the way they currently are. And then there's the proposal of having stairs. Are you expressing a preference one way or the other between those options?
I don't have a preference. Um, this particular switchback and a cup and one other switchback, the way they're graded now, they will drain into Jasper Ridge in part. And I would prefer that no property drain into another property that can be avoided and it, when it doesn't occur naturally. It's not a big problem, I don't think. And Jasper Ridge, I doubt would complain. I, I think steps can be nice. You can actually see steps in the left image there and they work well in many trails. But if you have someone who is in a wheelchair or a walker, or if you have, I mean, you, you can't navigate steps. So in that sense, I don't think they're desirable and I don't think they're necessary.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Can you elaborate on whether, or whether there's any unit to continue working with the property owner?
So Jenna has provided a five-year maintenance plan for the project and, uh, I've talked to Sue Epstein. Everybody seems very amenable to sort of thinking ahead to, you know, I, I think about landscapes over the long haul, whether it's from 1930 to the present or from now until I die. But, and, and the landscape is going to change. And I think Sue is really committed to making sure that there is habitat for wildlife. Jenna and I have also talked about what plants would be suitable as sort of these shrub islands. And conservation has lots of ideas.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, I see Sue, you've, you had your hand up. I didn't know if you wanted to comment on that or not. Your hand's gone down. Hands back up.
I knew. Oh, hi. No, I, I actually forgot what I was going to say. Thank you, Nona. That was, uh, really great. I love seeing that picture from above. Of, and, and you're right about oaks coming back, but we're, we're losing them at the same time. Some, because they're quite, the property is quite, is quite old. Oh, I, I guess I wanted to say something about the TrailScape Company. Um, that was a really interesting discussion. Because they are still sending flyers out to people in Portola Valley and advertising in local publications. So, you know, I, I have a feeling that they're just trying to avoid getting permits in order to get their work done. And I could conjecture that maybe it's because it takes a long time to get them, perhaps. I don't know. But, uh, you know, as I said, they are advertising regularly and they, you know, we're, we're very persuasive and they like the property and they map the trails well. Um, and they're, they're holding up beautifully under difficult circumstances like the last two winters where it's really rainy. And I, I have to say a shout out to Lou Platt on amazing drainage on our property. Because besides the trails, there's a lot of, um, things that were built in, you know, culverts and, you know, bridges and, and things, things like this that are just really highly engineered. And one of my best friends from college worked closely with Lou Platt and, and before I bought the property, he, she told me, she said, he was a consummate engineer and that everything on the property was, was thoroughly in, had to be perfectly engineered. And we've seen through these difficult weather events of the last few years that our, our land and, and road are, are holding up absolutely beautifully. And what, uh, Nona said is that the, you know, the trails do need more love. We, we, we haven't really known what to do with them for the last three years because we, we can't really, they were never completed. We, when we got that cease and desist order, we stopped. And they weren't tamped down and they weren't landscaped in and all those things. So, you know, Jeff and I, if you see fit to approve us, we will continue to work on the trails and, and with, with Jenna and Nona and, and everyone who, you know, wants to help it make it, make it a showplace. Um, we are committed.
That's true. That's great.
What was the name of the company that you mentioned? Was it TrailScape? I thought you said?
Yes. Yes, that was the name of the company. And you can see their ads in, in the local publications.
TrailScape.
Okay.
Good. Thank.
Thank you very much. Do we have, well, I guess we're on public comment at the moment. Do we have any other public comment? Don't see anything in the room and I don't see anything online. So I'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion and decision. Commissioners, what do you think?
My starting place is always that I think we have the most incredible ASCC. And my starting place is usually to affirm what, what they've done. Um, I found the trip out there today incredibly useful. Sue, you have an amazing team of experts and the hour or so we spent walking around that property was one of the better hours I've spent in a while. And I, um, really, I have old relatives and my mother was in a wheelchair for a long time. I like the absence of steps on those trails. Um, and, uh, notwithstanding Nona's comment about possible runoff to Jasper Ridge, I certainly thought on those sides, since there's not a clear rule about application of setback, that that should be left that way. I think the rest of your project, which we haven't discussed, is just gorgeous and, uh, from my, from my, uh, perspective, I'll take the stack recommendation and go with this.
Other commissioners?
Yeah, I'm, I'm ready to move, move forward, sign off on it. I, I guess I didn't quite catch if you mentioned, I mean, the, the one thing I would like to do is to accept the ASCC's recommendation that for those switchbacks along Jasper Ridge and the other 135 Lassandra, that we give the option to the applicant if they want to preserve them as they currently are.
Right. Is that something we need to? Jake, do we know, how do we note that?
Uh, since it's not in the proposed plans before us tonight, you would need to, uh, I would recommend making a, uh, a motion to add a condition of approval that the plans can be revised to keep those trails. And again, I would recommend just having the ASCC have a final look at it prior. They're already looking at it along with the conservation committee. Based on another condition, so, uh, allowing them the opportunity to review before building permit issuance, uh, would be recommended.
Okay. So we're just going to give them the option?
Yes, you know. Yes. So commissioner, you, you, you could make that part of, if there was a motion to approve, you could, you could make it part of the motion to add that condition.
Later.
As, yeah, we'll.
Yeah, of course.
I was trying to do, do we do one first, once again? Do it all at once. Nicholas.
Can I ask why you would create that optionality?
So I, so I, going, going back, I guess what happened was, um, they built the trail unpermitted and then, and, well, and then they were, um, you know, developing the pool and uh, as part of that needing to, uh, get the permit for the trails. And there were complaints from primarily the one property, only 145 Lassandra. And that, so that, as I understand, when that process went through the ASCC last year, at that time ASCC asked them to develop new plans with the trails, respecting the building setback around the whole property, which they did. And, um, when ASCC reviewed it more recently last month, um, you know, they, they noted that there really is not a privacy meter concern on like the Jasper Ridge side or also the 135 Lassandra side. And it, given that there's, they're, they're, they're on those concerns and also that it in a way just makes more sense, uh, for the rail to have the switchback instead of being cut short and having stairs or some other workaround. I, I think they felt that way and they didn't add it to the conditions, but they noted it for us in our document, which is on page four, uh, in the middle. They recommend that the planning commission approve the project with an added condition that additional screening is to be added, sorry. The ASCC also indicated that they would be supportive of allowing the trail into the setbacks for portions of the switchbacks that abut Jasper Ridge and 135 Lassandra. So, yeah, basically with their support and also to me it makes sense. And that, that's why I.
So the net result of that is that those stairs get eliminated and it just stays a regular switchback?
Yeah. And I guess the reason for providing the option is because the applicants have gone through the process of creating the new plans that conform for this, uh, previous request. So if they want to move forward with that, that's fine. But if they want to keep things as, as they are.
Also not to confuse things further, but there were also setback issues over on the uh, other part of it, other than Jasper Ridge and in that area. It's a different set of circumstances. So leaving the option available works well. It incorporates the plan that was made.
Nicholas, other thoughts or questions?
Yeah, it sounds like the applicant has worked extremely well, uh, following. They're coming to their attention that they need to work with conservation and ASCC. And I appreciate, uh, that. It sounds like it's a solid project. Too frequently, we're seeing people engaging in grading activities, removing significant trees, removing entire portions of, of ecosystems. Villa Loa soon comes to mind. And doing so with impunity, however accidental it may be, and that's troublesome to me. And then take the applicant or applicants at the word that it was inadvertent. But I still find it troubling. I appreciate what they've, what they've done. Uh, subsequent to that, there is a five-year plan. A plan on? There's a five-year plan. I know that there's a weed abatement plan. We've heard about the five-year, sounded like an O and M plan.
You comment on that?
Yes, that, that's correct. There's a five-year weed abatement plan that was included as attached to seven to the staff report.
Is it, is that, is it that weed abatement plan? Nona that you, I will reference it. And does that specifically call for ongoing engagement with the conservation committee? Thank you. I have nothing further.
Um, for the record and for the recording, the answers to both those questions were yes.
Oh, going out head nodding, right? Sorry. Yes, thank you. Thank you. Um, I guess I, you know, so, so in terms of the project, I'm, I'm good with the rest of the commissioners. I'm actually intrigued by Nicholas's point, which is, and I'm not sure it even affects what we decide here, but I guess this is really more Terrence. So what? I mean, presumably, if there is some sort of penalty required, and, and I know it's nothing that was done deliberately, how would that proceed? Um, and the second part of it, I think, was, and what are we as a town doing about, you know, this TrailScape company? What, what are our options in those two areas? I guess options and two, it's kind of like, what is the town likely to do? And then if we're concerned about that, what do, do we do something as the planning commission as part of this discussion, this motion?
I would, I would not include it as having to do with this motion. However, um, I will make a report to you on the, uh, at your next meeting. And based on what I, what I find out about this issue, you could, you could decide to, um, to question or, or, or do a colleague's memo or something like that. So um, let me find out what happened and what, what our, what our standards are and I'll get back to you. But I wouldn't, I would not connect it to this, um, to this application.
Okay.
In my, in my.
Why you wouldn't ask for compliance with the particular section of code as a condition of approval, whatever that section requires?
You know what the section is?
I do.
What does it require?
There you go. It is, uh, title 15, uh, section, uh, point 04 of the building code. Subsection, uh, appears to be G. So I'm open as to how that is applied in fact. But to the extent that the language has shall in it, and it's not discretionary.
Can you read it to us?
Clarify the number?
Yeah.
1504 and then what?
15.
Then there's a 0 is building code.
Yeah, so it is. The way they, they did, there's a 1504 and then I controlled F on permit until I got to, okay, no. It's a subsection G.
Well, I think you're missing numbers in.
Yeah, that's just, that's not a, that's not a, that's not a citation. I guess I, I, I would feel like we do not include that in this particular, um, matter. I, I agree with you, Mr. Terrence, Mr. Terrence. But I do think it's something to, to look into. Uh, it's not entirely comparable, but at one point I ran a state program and had to send letters out to everybody who was pulling underground storage tanks about not dumping the oil that they were pulling out of the tanks back into the ground. Not that this is of that magnitude, but I think it's worth thinking about as a separate project for us to pursue. Personally, I wouldn't make it part of this at all, especially since we don't even have a citation at hand. And, and I feel like this homeowner has been almost held up by the fact that they got this cease and desist order and now it's time for them to be able to move forward.
No, I mean, I think we actually do have the citation.
No, you do. Okay.
So what you're potentially proposing though is just saying as part of our approval, we're saying, and of course they'll comply with the existing code?
And the council will enforce what the provision, whatever. And the town shall enforce what the provision, whatever that, whatever, however the town rules on it.
Right. And they may decide what their course of action and whatever.
It may be that there's, that the town interprets it differently. They're not going to sit. That's not our job. But before we move forward, I'd want to make sure that that the section is appropriately at least evaluated as it's not fair to the applicant that three years after the violation, at the planning commission meeting, some planning commissioner says, yeah, but what about section fifteen oh four? And it's like, that's, that's, we shouldn't be having this conversation. And I don't want to have the conversation after the fact. I'd like the town to figure it out with the applicant, move forward with it, and then report back to us. I think the applicant has done a nice job, having stumbled into this problem. Town should do what the town should do. Follow the Shao language and then everybody moves on. That's kind of.
Yeah, I think it does specify the penalty here, right? It says double building permit fees and also five, whatever the penalty resolution.
Yeah. So I mean, just like follow the the blessed law.
And I mean, that presumably should be happening regardless of what we do.
I'm just saying that it has been the last three years and we're raising the issue now. It seems to be a habitual problem that we're running into and if that requires a motion from the DIA that the law to be looked at at least, I'm very happy to do that.
Did we do that as a separate motion? You're thinking, you're thinking it all together?
As you got, we can do whatever you'd like, but I won't vote for it.
Okay.
The chair?
Sir.
That doesn't indicate, since, since the commissioner is indicating a recommendation that we comply with our existing code, not adding new regulations or anything like that. I don't see any problem with including a reminder essentially to, to comply with the code. I, I don't, I don't think it creates an issue.
Thank you. Ronnie, are you kind of okay with this?
Yes.
Linda?
As long as it's worded the way Terrence learned it, yes. Worded it, yes. As long as the wording is along those lines, yes.
Okay. I don't know if it's Terrence or Jake. So, so we had basically a motion. Can you propose a motion that was sort of the original one here with the two changes that were proposed?
I can take a crack at the first one. That is adding a condition of approval indicating that the applicant, if, should the applicant decide to keep the trail within the setbacks for portions of the trail that are abutting Jasper Ridge and 135 La Sandra, that they may do so. And the final plan shall be reviewed by at least one member of the ASEC prior to building permit issuance.
Okay, so.
Do I want me to move that?
Well, well, let's get the other person.
Prior, prior to issuance of the building permit, the applicant shall receive from the town disposition of compliance with section fifteen oh four.
What do you decide?
Zero two zero dot G violation penalties? So it's a, we'll receive from the town disposition on. And presume.
Right. We're not, we're not telling the town what to do. We're telling them to work through the through the code.
Right, 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 write a letter.
Yes.
This is, this is the answer.
Okay. Can we motion off that?
Can I make that motion that was just described?
Please. I'll do it. I would so move.
Ronnie, give me a second.
A second.
Give me a second. All right. Well, all in favor? We need.
I think we probably need to do.
Roll call on this one, you think? Okay. Let's do a roll call then. All right. When in doubt, do a roll call then.
Chair Golden?
I.
I'm, I'm voting now, what, for the whole package plus these two changes?
Yes. That is correct.
Okay, then, yes.
All right. Vice Chair Tarn?
Oh, you weren't roll called.
Well, he was looking at me. So I thought that was roll call enough.
Commissioner Krasinski, yes. All right. Oh, I'm sorry. She already, she jumped out of line, but.
Doing a roll call.
Commissioner Brothers?
I know he was very good at following.
Yes.
Okay, so that's four eyes, one absent.
Okay, I think we are done with this particular section. And hopefully, things will be moving forward.
Thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
No, no, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So I think it's the commissioner reports and then staff reports and then we'll do a public comment on those two. Do we have any commissioner reports?
In all those months when we weren't meeting, and I was hearing about it from many, many people, I went back and looked at a, a number of things. And that's point number one. And background point number two, when I applied for this position, then Laura said, well, in your application, tell us how you can meet the requirements of being on the planning commission. So I went and I looked everywhere I could look for a definition of the rules and the roles, the policies of planning commission. We don't have it. We have one sentence on the website. And so I've, I've talked before about how I, I felt like we're kind of this entity that maybe is operating on tradition, which is fine, but, but not with a lot of hard data. Then the third thing I did, because I was hearing lots of words about transparency, lack of transparency and, and to some extent, lack of productivity issues at the town, I went back and looked at how often, and, and lots of comments about how we had only met like four times this year. And I, I'm not saying that we need to meet, meet for the sake of meeting, but I did go back and look at the years twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen and found that the planning commission met with, with a substantive agenda, as best I could tell, eighteen, twenty-two and eleven times in those years. So averaging once a month. And clearly we haven't been anywhere near that in the two years Ronnie and I have been on this commission. Like I said, I don't need to meet for just no particular reason, but there are a lot of things that happened in this town that seem to be within our jurisdiction if we were to, to focus on it. I mean, the obvious thing that comes to mind is the fact that the maps with the newly created zoning code don't map, don't, don't correlate to reality. So there's something that sort of has, has never gotten done. A variety of, of things like that. So I think my, my background thinking on all of this, the other thing I did was I looked at towns of Portolaval, of Woodside, Palo Alto. And even Woodside has a greater description of what their roles are and, and how their things change over time. Palo Alto has the code and then they have like a four-page policy. And then Palo Alto actually puts together an annual plan for their planning commission. So yes, I've run huge organizations with budgets of millions of dollars and hundreds of people that I, and I'm not, and I'm trying to not think in that context, but I feel like we could use a few, a little more meat on our bones and address some of these things. The final thing, Terrence, I should have talked to you about this in advance, but some of you know, I put in a permit application for a remodel of my kitchen, which has zero exterior issues. And I don't even have official recognition that it's been received and it's almost eight weeks now. So I'm one of these people in line wondering what's happening before you got here, Terrence. You, you, you know, you have my full support and, and, and I appreciate you a lot. So the other thing I thought of that would be consistent with other planning commissions is to get some sort of a maybe monthly report, certainly until you get through the backlog, you must have some internal management scheme that we could share on what is backed up and what has not come forward in the basically two years that we've been obsessed with the housing element and then the zoning code. So I'd like to put some meat on that, on these bones. I, I mean, I'm happy to do the drafting and I'm, I'm, I'd be delighted to work with somebody on this, but I think we need a little better explanation of ourselves. There may be areas that we, this is, this is getting into, you know, the difficult part of it is there may be areas that traditionally the planning commission has looked at, but hasn't traditionally looked at, but we might still be the appropriate body to look at. I've heard that from certain council members. So I'd like to, to proceed along, along something like that. Obviously, nobody wants to even consider it. Might be a waste of time, but that's what I've been thinking. I think it's a matter of drafting something that's a couple of pages, probably not extensive. Getting maybe a monthly report from you, maybe committing to meet monthly to go over that report if we don't have anything else to meet on. Until we get through this transition of the town where people have the meeting that got canceled last night was because people didn't call you. They didn't know who to call. They called the wrong people. There was a wedge meeting that got boycotted last night. So I'd like to see us do what we can do in our little sandbox to move this forward.
Are you suggesting?
Go ahead. I'm done.
Are you suggesting that you would like to write your colleagues letter?
Doing that, but I wanted to sort of throw it out here first. I can certainly do it that way, but it's almost like writing the letter is doing the job.
But it would be the agendized issue that we'd be able to talk about, think about. There are parts, for example, of what you just said, those I understand what you're saying. It feels, there's enough there that I can't fully block it. So I'm responding to the little bit like a Rorschach test, which is probably not the right way to approach a, an issue.
But if it does require debate and discussion, that don't happen with agendas?
Yeah. And I think that you would do that through a dear colleagues letter. And again, with the indulgence of the, the chair.
Right.
My suggestion is to bulletize the issue rather than to have a full-fledged exegesis or example of what it would be.
Yeah, for sure.
And then we can have a conversation about it and out of that might come something like an ad hoc committee making it up.
Right, right. No, I'm happy to do that. I, I didn't want to take the time to do that before I even got a little bit of a, a little bit of feedback.
Well, I certainly have thoughts and feedback, but it would be inappropriate to start talking about them now.
Okay. But, but such that it's worth the time to write the dear colleagues. Your thoughts would be there?
Sure.
Okay. I'll do that. Probably be a month or so for me to pull it together, but if I, I'll work with Terrence to get it on our journey. That's my commissioner's report.
I don't know if that comes with the report.
Well, I didn't know. Go with it. And when I started this, Terrence wasn't.
Okay, 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 okay. No other commissioner reports? Okay. Staff reports and then I'll, I'll do the, I'll ask for any public comment on, on both of them.
Great. Staff reports. Thank you. Yes, so we're still waiting for response from the state on the housing element. And no, it's been, only been a few days since I've spoken to you on this, but I, but there may be new members of the public that are hearing it. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. We're continuing to monitor it. No, no news is not necessarily bad news, but we're, we're trying to, we're trying to get this resolved so we can become a, have our housing element recertified. And I'm also trying not to be too much of a pest to, to the state. I did want to, I did want to keep you updated on our efforts to address the backlog in, in our building department and our, in our systematic issues that we've had. Well, we have, we have hired a senior permit technician named Gabe, who's, who's working, working diligently on working through the backlog. When he started, there were eleven hundred emails in the, in the inbox that hadn't been addressed and he has knocked that down. I talked to him on Monday, he knocked it down to two hundred. So so we're doing that now. We're also finding that some people who.
Took care of nine hundred? Two hundred? Eleven hundred down to two hundred or eleven?
Eleven hundred down to two hundred.
Emails. I don't mean they've solved.
I know, I know, I know.
And I, I, I will say unfortunately, it's become clear that in some places, the data that was, that people are, are, are saying they sent to us is lost in space somehow. So and so we're having to re-contact those people and get the information resent. But we're, we're working on it diligently and we're, and we also have a consultant, Yvette, that is, is here from, from an expert at, at building processing. And she's also helping to, to move through that process. We're also simultaneously looking at at process improvements. For example, instead of having four different ways of collecting documents to have a single way and link it more directly to our, our permit tracking software. I don't want to go into the weeds there, but that's, those are the kinds of things we're doing. We're not going to wait to fix the, fix, to improve the system to go forward. We are prioritizing moving those projects forward. John Biggs is making this his top priority. He meets with the, the permit staff every morning and they, and they go through any issues and they're trying, they're really trying to work through that backlog. And, you know, I, I would, if, if you're, if you're not, if you're having problems reaching, you know, if you're having problems with your permits, not just you, but the, the general public, and you've sent the email, you're not getting a response, feel free to give me a call or send me an email and I'll make sure it gets to the right place. So, so, so that's, that's the status of, of the building permit process. In addition.
You know how many permits are, are lost in those?
I, we don't know.
Two hundred remaining.
We don't know.
Emails.
We don't know.
Do we know how the condition arose?
Yes, the, when the, 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 the previous staff left, they, there was no one who knew how to operate the system. There was no one who knew how to, the, the way, the way the system was organized, there was not a single person in the city who knew how to do it. So we've had to reinvent a, a process. Or was there another question?
No.
So in, in addition, as, as you know, our sole in-house planner is on maternity leave. So we are, and we are, we had a position on the books. We've, we've moved it quick, forward quickly and we interviewed candidates this week and we're hoping to, we're hoping to bring somebody on within a few weeks to, as an assistant or associate planner to, to help do some of the internal work that we do. In addition, you know, to, to supplement what we're doing with the Good City Contractor. So, and the city, the city is also in the process of hiring a city engineer. We have a temporary, we have an interim city engineer, but we're in the process of doing a permanent recruitment. We had a, we hired a recruiter and a recruitment process ended a few days ago. So they're evaluating resumes. So we are working on stepping up the key positions. And that, and we're trying, we're trying to get things set on the right course.
Question about that?
Yeah.
Forgive me for not knowing this, the answer to this, but your, your title is interim. And so what is, what is your?
You seem very nice. Who are you, please?
I'll take the first part. Thank you very much. No, I, I am a retired annuitant. I was, I was the community development director and assistant city manager in Newark for fourteen years and Brentwood for two. And I retired and I'm now working part-time essentially helping, helping out the town. The town, the town is in, is in the process of recruiting a permanent director, but it, it is not that, it is not the top position of, of priority because I'm willing to, I think, I think because I'm willing to, to. because I'm willing to, I think, I think because I'm willing to, to stay for, for some time while the town gets around to its critical hires and, and move forward.
Are, are your hours limited in the same way that John Biggs was? Like, there was a maximum?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's why it's very helpful that he's also continuing on with, with the town, so we can, we can pass the baton back and forth to some extent.
And with, with regard to like our commission, what are you handling versus John Biggs? Will he be here sometimes or?
Well, until, at this point, John's primarily focused on fixing the, the building permit process, so I'll be your contact for any, any, any issues that come forward. And then, of course, once, once we have a, a assistant planner, he or she and I will be, will be staffing your meetings. And hopefully they're better at doing the Zoom than I am.
Good. Any other questions? Yeah, I'm gonna go, so I'm, so I'm gonna go with that next, or go with the public comment. No, you guys are good. Okay, and so it's time for public comment on the, the staff reports, and I see somebody out there. Please come up, turn on the microphone, speak closely into it, give your name.
My name's Ellen Bernaza. I have a quick question. I don't know if this is under your purveillance, but the other, well, probably a month ago, I was in the offices, and a man comes, and I was waiting for somebody just standing out in the middle, and a man comes in and he's asking, he, he wants an inspection done on a small job he's having done. And there's, I know over the last quite a bit of time, there's been a clash between the people that are working in the town compared to the residents. But the gentleman he was asking just kept saying, well, you just have to email a request in, but he didn't even get up from his desk, or his, not his desk, but his computer over on the side to talk to the resident. You know, I think things would go a lot smoother if, if the people in the front would show a little interest in the, and, you know, like they're trying to do something. But it's just like this, and so the man walked out, and then he comes back in so frustrated that no one is addressing him. And so I think if there's something we can do to have a more personable aspect of dealing the, the residents to the, you know, the people behind the desk, I think it would go a long way.
Thank you. And let's see, I don't see anybody else in the schoolhouse to ask a public question. Do we have anybody online who would like to ask, make a public comment? Not really question, comment. I do not see anybody online raising their hand. Here we go. We've come to the end of the meeting.
I move. We adjourn.
Second.
No second. No, no roll call though. You don't need a roll call. Okay, in favor?
Hi.